Okay, the engine's started up and we are off. Yep, the sleigh just started up as well. Here we go. It's gonna be a bumpy ride this time. Off we go. There's another camera I think we've got to, are there? There we are. Nice light start there. That's on the barn branded. Now this one. T N K. This is right there to Nottingham for this one as well. Four minutes. This is even faster. Oh my goodness, this would be brilliant. These are the best. These are the best mini bus to N T C. Bigger barn doors this time. We'll slow down here now. Fantastic acceleration on these minibus. I think they're brilliant. Too bad the sun's been the wrong place for me, but I can't do much about that. It is what it is, I'm afraid. Oh my goodness. Right, got a left turn there. And breathe. I know this is a long way, but I don't mind. Wouldn't be nice going the other way on this, but can't get along. This is doing the minibus ward today. Because Y Y D has gone. Or is elsewhere, I don't know. Presumably gone, I guess. Not running at all. I didn't see it yet, but I think it's not running at all today. Well, it has been known to be part 11 before, so yeah. There comes the A46. Okay, we've got a minibus passing through. Working the... A33. There's an E200 there as well. Getting the others. And... Outside of our storage today to do this. Oh, oh, another house. Top out bank there. Have we always spent the village? The old, this is where the old person would have gone, Puffell Bishop. I think that's the centre last year on Park North Street Council, Central. On the Park Council, the A33. Which was formerly run by Vecta before then. We've got a nice old vehicle coming through. Oh, oh, that's not one, no. I love these things. They're taking out the old street already, I'd be doing better. Simply tap the app or pull to book. Supposedly intended for Nottingham on Demand service. Supposedly. Except it's not on demand, it's on the 33. It is what it is though. It's last week, presumably perhaps seen part 10, part 11. And breathe, we can make a stop now. Double doors, by the way. This is Westburyshire based currently. That's been doing a lot of other work. That's bow. These have got the tinted star windows on. Oh yeah. What's the sleigh come on? There we go. Happens sometimes. There's a clock not showing the correct time. So it is midnight. You'd do well to, you'd do well to reach that time. It happens sometimes. Sleigh's often reboot. And these. Finally, this is really fast. Still bumpy, but not the bumpiest ride I don't think I've had so far. Maybe the smirks been built to run on the smooth end side of things. I don't know. A46 under it now. Ah, struggled for it now, so the pressure will be upon us eventually. That's good news. Carry on. This is saying trees are ours. Can't go pylon for them. Yeah. Chicane. Then, there's another chicane. Then, then through chicane. Heard to be ragged on that as well, and it is definitely more than E Connect. I saw that when I was on the previous minibus area. Outside, door's opening. Outside, door's closing. And away we head. What's the lights go on this time? There we go. Ah. Ah, here's why the display's turned off and on. It's because beast buses have stop-start technology, I think. Okay. Nine minutes. Pass her any moment now. I guess. I don't know, never know. Grapton Canal coming up. Yep, Grapton Canal, there it is. There's Algate in there. Slightly slowed down, that's good. Think we've found a dog race bit, seemingly there's no car. I suppose there's some, I suppose residential, I suppose, so fair dues. Some more houses being built. Barret Homes. Lot of construction going on, I guess. As it were. Passing it. Gotta wait here now, because all the traffic's a bit... There we go. Almost there. So almost there. Ooh, still let's through. And there we go. Almost there. Slowly, steady does it. And, ooh, more traffic still. Was it letting us through? No, we're gonna let this through first. Then I think it will be, no, there's some cyclists coming through, can't take that. So, I think the portal needs to come through. Oh no, there we go, finally. Can't move it in. Slightly slower. Do it, it's about 12:41. Now temperature up, oh, yes. Now temperature up, this time are in operation. Three minutes left away. There we go. Gotta wait here now. Before we get going, because the light's now in operation. So, yep, freeway control. We could be here, though, why? I suppose, I don't know. Oh, here we go. This does have the other lights as well. They're different. They will also... Ah, it's a bit dirty on this, you're not gonna see much of that. Much of that coach. As making its way through shortly will be A33. Directed by a car, right? There it is. Oh, got a good snap. A Z, with the onus for that one. Eco-traveller. Just coming through this. No, couldn't get through, so we have to let them through first. Yep. That's my best snap of Z, because we were going around the turn. That's lucky. But, yes, I know it takes a while to sign, I know. Next right turn there. So we're gonna go for the junction right. This is the only one with the white states on the 33 today as well. Oh, there's the caverners turning up. Turn now. Hear the indicator, be listening carefully. There we go. Oh, that's 50. Give it a boost. Oh yeah. Look at that near toss, and there's Nottingham where we're gonna terminate. It's like this, so we've got to be ever, ever so careful there. Unlucky. Although aren't gonna be slowed down for long. There we are, just overtaking it now. Won't be slowed down for long, though. That's lucky. This is not a new dangerous and fast cars, we are so lucky. Lucky for us anyway. I suppose maybe one day it's on the barn. P. Nice four. Go right. We will drive carefully, very carefully in fact. This or Tolton. First image to begin with here. In fact, no, it's actually Tina Hopley coming for Kate Garraway. I've always thought over here's actually Tina Hopley. Who we often see coming for Kate Garraway, apparently. Yep. Yep, paddles put down before the respect of the event, I think, but anyway. Tolton Airport. Oh brilliant. Okay, on the final cross section of route now. My safe pass is 41st. I'll say plus is 41st. Okay. I think we might go up quickly shortly. Just before the end of it. I'm not too sure. Oh wow, so sir, helicopter. Right. Oh, it's about to land! Oh wow! Lots of not forty-four coming into land then. Calling here now.
Hi, hello. Hello, it's Ray and Jeff.
Hi, you are, yes.
Ray and Jeff, what are you doing with them all?
Not very busy today, are you? There we go. Okay. That's all the fast work done, we can take it gently from here. Though it's still gonna be bumping our way to four. Oh, that was lucky, ooh, coming through. Ooh! SBU Almiron's supposed to work us to take up the next 33.
Right. Alright.
Was on that Fiat earlier actually. That Fiat you just saw, I did that earlier. It was on the 33 and it is, which it is doing today. It was on that earlier, it was brilliant, I loved it. There's the car wash which unfortunately here at Moysden today is broken. So not even gonna get to wash this thing in there for hurry. And there, unlucky as a good over clean on the rear. There's another Fiat there in the new livery. Couldn't see which one that one was in the grave, but it is. In Nottingham's connects, presumably doing on-demand work. There's a Phantom Fiat running. Think it might have been XYX with that. So I think that's probably on-demand that Fiat, whereas this is not on-demand. I don't know what Nottingham's thinking. Because that's specifically for Nottingham's on-demand services with... Oh, there we go. Oh, now you see it. That's, I think that is on-demand. Yeah, that's on-demand that Fiat is, that's definitely on-demand. That's strange. Supposed to be beetles up there for the Nottingham's as well, so... Yeah. Four minutes approach from Bridgeford now. Here we have. A, 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 a... Holmeswood coaches, I think. One of those tour liner ones that they have. I believe it's Holmeswood. Yep, it is, Holmeswood. Is that the only branding for it, is on the rear? Hey, coming in. Irregular hexagon inside, eh, nah. That is more like a common type of wall there, that one. I never displayed these use. The next stop is Central Avenue. Also for other local bus services. There we are. And we'll get a Fiat. Nice. Almost ready. These stops aren't the best. Nice back to zero one again. They always reset. Another stop. So what I shall do here is, um, since, in case we got copyrighted, I'm gonna pause the camera then. Oh, that, um, resume till we go off. Okay, and after we've got a change, we're now on the way. To finish our journey. Get some juice. Oh, there's some princesses running through there. Oh, that's nice. Running along the cruises there. 4090, 90. What's on the end? 10 coming forward, six, it's a six. 43. The gap's there. As I'm doing. Another tram there. That's like an Aladdin centre it is. That's there now. What's on 20? Worked in the States. It's 101... Which one the new livery's fellow is, I can't remember off the back of my head. 101, 101, 2 or something like that, one of those. 1010, maybe I'm not too sure. I honestly can't remember off the back of my head, but... Yep. Okay, we can un-drop out now. As we're not part of the end of the journey. Interesting line-ups today. Unplug that, no, unplug that, get on then. There we are. Guess we don't need that anymore. Tidy. There we are. Just one there. Just getting pretty little tidy. And up. Just there now. At the end. That is a TS1 to 30 on the 10. That's the Hearn's fix, that's there. Not go whip it, even though it is a tour liner, but Hearn's also used tour liners as well, so it's a Hearn. That time. Well, now riding into Fyelane, we will be. And that's for the bell, I will do the honors. I'll do the honors for the bell. Starting... Now. EVM no gun from, by the way. And there it is! Thank you for watching, we'll see you next time. Goodbye.